Call the roll, please.
Seager.
Here.
Arsamo.
Here.
Robert.
Here.
Truxillo. Dougherty.
Here.
Milligan.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Martino.
Here.
Narcisse.
Here.
Troncoso. Walker.
Here.
Barrios.
Here.
Binings.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum, however, at this time, if you would like to appoint the two alternates to achieve a larger commission.
So appointed.
Harold Barrios and Nick Binings have been appointed as alternates for tonight's meeting.
Okay, public announcements. Mitch, could you please read the public announcements?
Sure. Please silence all phones and electronic devices. Appeal cards are on the right. If you would like to file an appeal, you may grab one. Speaker cards are also on the right. If you wish to speak on a case, please fill out a speaker card. Public speaking, five minutes on each side and three minutes for rebuttal. After your case is heard, please exit the building or you may stay. Pursuant to Section 200-2H9F of the Unified Development Code, members of the audience shall observe the following rules of conduct and decorum while the meeting is in progress. Number one, refrain from talking to other members of the audience in a loud or otherwise disruptive manner. Number two, refrain from initiating private conversations -- excuse me, private conversations with commission members, staff, or legal counsel. Number three, refrain from approaching the podium unless invited to do so by the chairman. Number four, refrain from engaging in any behavior which is not in keeping with proper and courteous conduct. Number five, refrain from cheers, jeers, applause, or any expressions of approval or disapproval of comments made by any speakers or any actions taken by the commission. Number six, refrain from discussing matters not on the published agenda unless the proper procedures have been followed in adding the item to the agenda. Finally, number seven, refrain from bringing any objects into the building and auditorium where the planning meeting is to be held that are disruptive to the meeting. The chairman shall take whatever action is necessary to ensure that these rules are observed and the meeting proceeds in an orderly fashion.
Okay, please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Seager and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Narcisse.
Heavenly Father, Grand Architect of the universe, we beseech your continued blessings upon the citizens, elected officials, employees, and the commission of St. Tammany Parish, remembering our fellow Commissioner, Robert Troncosco. May we realize that your all-seeing eyes upon us and be influenced by the spirit of truth that we might enjoy thy divine approbations here below. May we heed your never-ending call for nobler deeds, for higher thoughts, and for greater achievement. Dear God, grant us the faith of Job, the strength of Samson, and the wisdom of Solomon as we endeavor to positively influence the policies of our fair parish for the good of all of its citizens. Let the world and especially St. Tammany Parish be a better place for us being here tonight. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you want? Commissioner Arsamo.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Commissioner Seager.
When we did the election of officers, was that for both commissions? In the past, it's only been one at a time?
Yeah, we need to add -- we need to add -- well, actually, it's just, it's the planning and zoning commission still -- yeah, it's the same now.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want a second?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes. Please vote.
Motion to accept the minutes as written carries.
We have a request to hear item number seven on the agenda first without objection. Oh, is there any -- sorry, I'll get this right eventually. Ms. Helen, do we have any postponements?
We do not have any postponement, however, we would like to hear the new business as the first item on the agenda.
New business as the first business?
Yes.
Okay, any objection? Okay, we'll move the item number seven to the first position. Mitch, could you read it into the record?
Certainly. Item number seven, which is amendments to the Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Unified Development Code, Chapters 100 through 900.
Staff? Please read the excruciating detail.
This is housekeeping text amendments, number eight. I just want to let you all know we're kind of wearing down on these and coming to a close with these housekeeping amendments, and that's why you see there's only three on number eight. Number six was postponed at last week's council hearing so that staff could work with some constituents and developers for certain concerns, which I believe most of which are addressed in this document here. Number one is essentially just to state that where P&amp;Z or council denies an application, right now it's in the ordinance that if they deny a zoning change or a conditional use or an application for a PUD, the applicant has to wait one year before they can reapply. We realize that minor subdivisions were not in this list, so that's just simply adding that to this list, which is in the same way that we used to do things under the old code. Number two is a suggestion to change the lot size requirements for a two-family dwelling and non-residential uses in the TF district. Number, round six amendment suggested that we make this 15,000 square feet, only because if you notice under the density allocation under the TF, it says 7,500 square foot per unit. And, and thinking about that, staff thought, well, if you're going to develop a duplex or a two-family unit, you would obviously need 15,000 square feet. Well, when, you know, I'll say interested members of the public saw that, they thought, no, what, I think we need to come to the table and, you know, discuss this further. So, in keeping with discussions that we've had with them and in reviewing the old code where you could have eight dwelling units per acre under the TF district, we have determined that it's kind of necessary to move backwards away from the 15,000 square feet because you're basically requiring bigger lot sizes, which doesn't allow for more affordable housing to be constructed. So, in keeping with the old sentiment of the old code, we are recommending that it be 10,800 square feet for duplex and for commercial dwelling units and maintaining that 75-foot lot width. The other thing that this suggests, suggested text to the TF district does is allow where a duplex is constructed, a lot line to bisect that structure so that someone developing a duplex could sell off one half of that. We did some analysis with other municipalities and found that that's common practice, so we're adding it into the suggested text of number two in the housekeeping amendments. The third thing that is suggested in number two is to require at least one parking space be provided within the buildable area of the lot. We are also moving forward with suggesting that we maintain the 30-foot front yard setback for TF, and we wanted to make sure where you have a requirement of two parking spaces per unit, that you're not lining cars up and completely eradicating a front yard. So, this kind of addresses that and also maintains that 30-foot yard, 30-foot front yard setback. Number three is to say where a irrigation plan is required for commercial and industrial property and the applicant wants to request from the director of planning and development that that requirement be removed, that they need a stamped plan for a natural system or low-impact development enhancements that are consistent with the Low-Impact Development Guidebook. That's it.
Thank you, staff. Do we have anyone in the audience to which to speak in favor of this item? Anyone to which to speak against? You coming forward, Mr. Carlos? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
State your name and address, please.
Col Hernandez, 2818 Mesa Court, Mandeville, unincorporated Mandeville. I heard the beginning about the ordinance that was supposed to be considered for adoption on, on Thursday by the council and an explanation as to why it was postponed, but also the introduction of comments number seven were also, was also postponed, and I heard nothing about that. And I guess the question is, is there an explanation for, for that delay? I, in, in looking, does it have to do with the same issue that we just spoke about that's going to be heard with number eight regarding the -- yes, it does, and that's what I concluded, actually, even though you didn't -- did, did you state that and I just missed it? Is that what happened?
Mr. Hernandez, please address the, the commission, please.
Excuse me, I should know the rules by now.
Yes, sir.
Yes, well, anyway, I believe that the, that the consideration, and for those that deal with two families, is, is interesting, although, although the, the statement is made that it also applies to the commercial, but I saw nothing in the, in the, in the text dealing, dealing with that. Is that, did I miss that, or is that just, it, it just doesn't apply to that, to, to the commercial part?
If one of the commissioners wishes to take up your, your question and address it to staff.
Aaron, can you advise Mr. Carlos?
You have to be recognized. That's okay. I'm going to let him finish, please.
No, I'm, I'm finished, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Robert.
I'm gonna, sorry. I'll wait for Aaron to answer Mr. Carlos's question.
Yes, sir, so if we look on page 205 of the three, three of five, starting with page 205, in the lot area of the chart, it says two-family dwellings and non-residential. So, that's the requirement for non-residential uses. It's 10,800 square feet.
So, it's the same, it's the same square footage requirement?
Yes, sir, yeah. And that same iteration is proposed on page 3 of 5 in the text.
Commissioner Robert, you have another?
No, actually, I had read through and I was just going to state that, kudos on reducing the square footage allowed on these lots. That being said, I was going to move to approve as written.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Robert, Commissioner Narcisse.
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comment, please vote.
Motion to approve as written carries.
We have a request to move item number five to the front of the agenda. Any objection? Without objection, please read the, read number, item number five into the record, please.
Item number five is case number 2024-4108-MRP. It's a re-subdivision of green space into Lot 139 and green space GS-2, Abita Ridge subdivision Phase 3B. Owner and representative is Abita River Park LLC, James G. Coet. Surveyor is Kelly J. McHugh and Associates Incorporated. Parish council district representative is Honorable Larry Rowling. Parcel is located on the east side of Abita River Drive, north of Harrison Avenue, Covington, Ward 3, District 2.
Staff?
The applicant is requesting to create one lot being, what, Lot 39. The subdivision requires a public hearing due to, as stated in restrictive covenants of the approved plat, no lot shall be further re-subdivided without approval from the planning commission, and the request shall be subject to the above and below comments, items one, two, and three. If you noticed on a survey, it shows you that a portion of the green space is requested to be taken to create a lot. It does not reduce the acreage or square footage or percentage, required percentage within a PUD below 25% required. And also, you see the plat which shows the additional lot, Lot 139, in the corner at the bottom right-hand corner of the plat, showing where the new lot is proposed to be located.
Okay, Mr. Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, Paul Marone on behalf of Abita Ridge, Abita River Park LLC, and Mr. Coet. This is, this is a request, as Ms. Lambert noted, to create Lot 139 out of an adjacent green space parcel. This is a, a lot that, quite frankly, should have been included in the original, in the original submittal was, but was omitted, so we're asking to create it now. In doing so, we are not materially changing the green space of the site. We still have well more than is required. We're still at 31%. We are maintaining the buffer that we originally created along Harrison Avenue, so we're not encroaching any closer into that buffer with this lot than, than any of the other lots. We're also preserving the buffer on the east side or the rear of this lot from our, our neighbor on that side as well. So, all of those components, the, the overall green space, the buffers on each side are all being maintained, so we would respectfully request your approval of the re-sub to create Lot 139 as set forth on the drawings in your packet. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners might have at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Marone. Does, I don't have any cards. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone against? We'll bring it back to the commissioner. Commissioner Robert.
My first question would be for Ross and Helen for staff. I did drive by this property, I drive by this property, this subdivision almost every single day on my way home, but I did pass by over the weekend, and there was no, do, do signs not go out for planning commission meetings? Do public notices not go out for those?
Yes, yes, the property was posted. Maybe it fell down, you know, we had a lot of bad weather, so I'm, I'm assuming that it fell down, but yes, it was posted.
Okay, we, when I went by on, on Friday, I apologize, Friday, there was no, nothing posted. I have very mixed feelings about this request. While I do agree that remove, adding this would not, you know, bring your green space buffer down lower than 25%, I, the subdivision is not completed yet. There are still homes going up. It just feels very unnecessary to me, especially for a subdivision that, from my recollection, there was a, an warranty extension last year by the parish council for items from the Department of Engineering that had been diva -- I'm sorry, that had been reported as maybe subpar, some of the road entrances crumbling, entrances into the subdivision. From a personal standpoint, I know that I have purchased property in a subdivision before that backed up to green space that was supposed to remain green space. I have family who has purchased property in major subdivisions that were supposed to be green space, and the developer later came back and built that green space out. I am not in favor of this request. I cannot imagine purchasing a home in a subdivision and thinking that I would have green space next to me. More than likely, I would imagine that that person probably paid additional for that property, only to have another home put on top of me. So, with that being said, I am against this. I would move to deny.
Commissioner Seager.
I disagree with my fellow commissioner. This area is, has not been developed yet. I don't think that that lot next to it is, is developed, and so I don't know if they have, if they actually have paid more. It meets the parish guidelines for green space and, I'm gonna, Ms. Helen.
She was showing me something.
What, I saw that, that's, what is the required percentage of green space?
The percentage of green space is 25%, and if I'm not mistaken, it's still 30%, at least, 30%.
Because it exceeds the amount required by the parish, I actually move to approve. They're following all parish guidelines and rules and regulations.
Okay. Commissioner Arsamo.
I would like to second the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Commissioner Martino.
To further the discussion, something I had not actually thought about or considered was vacant properties to be developed or built on. Could you verify, sir, which properties that are most adjacent to or close to this proposed parcel that have not been built but have been purchased?
So, it's a good question, and I don't, I don't have all of the information to answer everything that you asked, but, so the only parcel, I'll say, in my opinion, that would be affected would be the parcel to the north, because there is no parcel to the south, nothing to the east, there's a road to the west. To the best of my knowledge, the parcel to the north is undeveloped at this point. There is not a house on it, I believe, but I'll, Ms. Robert was out there, she'll correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe that's correct. I will also say that, to the best of my knowledge, and I, I feel certain that this is correct, if that lot has been sold by the developer, that lot has not been sold to an end user yet. That lot is owned by a builder who would then build and then sell to the end user, and the reason I say that is that is the typical progress that, that this particular developer used. He is also a builder himself, so he could be the owner and the builder, or he could have sold it to other builders, but I do not think that there is a, a family, a third-party owner of that lot at this time, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, not to speculate either way, but I, I ask that because it's something I had not considered, because I would also agree, whether, whether I lived in parcel or lot numbered one or 21 towards the rear, understanding that that's a dedicated green space in a, in a neighborhood, is sometimes a contributing factor. I've also been in that situation myself, and I'm, I'm sensitive to that. That being said, I, I would almost, I, I agree that it, with this entire area not being developed and built, it may not be a lot that's, that's necessarily something that should go forward for a, a change. That's all my comment.
Okay. Commissioner Robert.
I just wanted to state that, that property, there is a residence on it, I have photos. It is owned by Ms. Bobby Sue Babin on the JIS portal that is Lot 1. The majority of that side of that street is built now. If you go further down that eastern entrance on Abita Ridge Drive, back towards the rear of the subdivision, some of those homes are not, are currently, they're still under construction, but the entire front portion has been built out to the effect that the property owner of Lot 1 also has a fence on that property line, so it is very much, very developed in the front of that subdivision.
Mr. Marone, I have a quick question for you. Can you, on the plat design, can you identify the lot number that is associated with this request?
So, if you're looking at this?
I don't see, oh, sorry. I didn't see it on the, yeah, yeah, thank you very much. Right there. Okay, that was just, I was going to make a comment that, you know, it is adjacent to the, the, basically the general setback of the subdivision, but it does not look like it was adjacent to any other green space that's dedicated, so I can, I can see how this might have been an omission in the original plat design. We have a motion and a second, so I'll call for a vote. Please vote. Hold on, hold on, please. Commissioner Arsamo.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so are we voting on?
We have a motion and a second to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve carries.
At this time, we'll be starting the agenda in the regular order. Item number one, please read it into the record.
Case number one is entering parish right-of-way service to Eastman and Tammany Trace. This is a request to enter the parish right-of-way for Airport Road and Slidell for the purpose of installing the Liberty Point subdivision access and utility lines. The debtor is Due North Development CDL LLC. Parish council district representative is Honorable Arthur Lafflin. Property is located west of Airport Road, north of US Interstate 12 in Slidell, Ward 9, District 11. This item was postponed at the December 10, 2024 meeting.
Staff?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Staff has received a petition to enter the parish right-of-way for the purposes of connecting the proposed Liberty Point subdivision, which is located in the vicinity limits of Slidell, to Airport Road, which is a parish-owned right-of-way, as well as to extend a sewer force main to connect to the existing city sewer system. The staff has no objection to the request at this time. However, we would like to make special note to the resolution in front of you guys today, the, excuse me, the draft resolution, that if you read through, maybe look a little bit atypical from the normal enter-the-parish right-of-way, because as I stated, that it is involving property being involved in that is already previously annexed into the city of Slidell. I'd like to call your attention to item number four and item number five of the resolution that states that we will be requiring a traffic impact analysis or memorandum in accordance with ordinance section 900 regarding this development, as well as item number five that states that we will be requiring a hydraulic and hydraulic analysis prepared by licensed professional engineer in accordance with ordinance, uh, chapter 900 regarding this development, since it will be tying into parish-owned infrastructure and parish-owned drainage features. Please let me know if you have any other questions. Thank you, sir.
Ted, I do have a question. What is this, what is the status of the approval of the subdivision that this is going to be connected to?
Do you not have the, I don't know where it stands within the city processing, what, you know, assuming this case goes forward, these are going to be some of the questions I have for them, and assuming this enter-the-right-of-way resolution gets approval tonight or gets postponed, or whatever action is taken on it tonight, we have some follow-ups with, where we have with the drainage report, the traffic report.
So, the, the approval would just place this under your jurisdiction as far as access to the right-of-way, is that correct?
That's correct, sir. So, in, in order for them to get a work order to perform any of the work as it relates to the connection to the right-of-way or the sewer work within the right-of-way, they would still have to go through the normal process of obtaining a work order through the Department of Engineering, subject to the items listed in this resolution, and that's why I made special reference to items number four and five, because those are typically not normal items we put in a resolution, but due to the complexity of this request and the fact that it's not going through our jurisdiction and our permitting process, we felt it appropriate to ask for additional information with this request to ensure that the parish infrastructure is being protected and taken care of and meeting our code. So, as it relates to have, do they have their density, do they have their approvals? I don't know that with the city of Slidell yet. Those are things we, we will be asking for approvals of.
Okay. Mr. Marone?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, again, Paul Marone on behalf of Black Oak Holdings LLC. As Mr. Reynolds noted, it's a request to enter the right-of-way to access and connect to the city of Slidell's sewer and water lines, and also to make a driveway connection to Airport Road. To Mr. Gaines, chairman's question about the status of the project, I would, I would describe it as we are very close, we have the zoning, we have the planning approvals, we're very close to being able to obtain a work order to go to work. This is one of the items that we have to do. There are a few other punchless items, if you will, that we need to resolve with the city of Slidell, and then, of course, meet the requirements in, in this resolution if this body adopts it as, as proposed. We are aware of the items in the resolution, in particular, items four and five that Mr. Reynolds noted regarding the traffic study and the hydrologic analysis, and we, we have no objection and, and will comply with the resolution as proposed. So, this is our only means of access to the property, so we would ask for your approval to have access to the right-of-way, to connect to the central utilities that are there from the city of Slidell, and to have our driveway connection to Airport Road.
So, city council, just to, so we can, we can, so my fellow commissioners can attribute this to something that we're used to, is this, is a subdivision a preliminary stage of approval, final stage of approval? What's, what stage of approval is it at?
Definitely not final approval.
We're waiting on a couple of planned comments to move into construction permits.
So, you haven't cut in roads, there's no utilities, there's?
No work has begun.
No work is done.
No work has begun yet.
So, we, to designate this as preliminary, then? So, we, to designate this as preliminary, then?
Yeah, so I would say it's similar to your preliminary, we're working through the final steps of that to be able to get a work order to actually go to work. We do not have that yet, just yet.
Okay. Any other, any other comments? Were you finished?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm done.
Okay. I do have, from the audience, I have one card which is against, that does not wish to speak, I'm gonna read the comments in the record, says, "Do not permit this request to enter the parish right-of-way, this would stop overdevelopment on Airport Road and traffic congestion and flooding to other homes on Airport Road." That having said, does anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone wish to speak against? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Commission. Commissioner Robert.
Just keeping in mind that we have no control over the subdivision plans whatsoever, that is city of Slidell annexed property, and this is strictly a request to enter the parish right-of-way for shared use of that area. I did do some research on this early in December, I believe it was December, my goodness, when it was first postponed, it's a parish road, I'm sorry, the... Excuse me. The property is across from an existing mall, it is about 500 feet, this entrance would be about 500 feet from the traffic signal in that area, I did measure it out. I don't have a problem with this. If Slidell wants to fight this fight with a developer, let's let Slidell fight that fight with a developer, they are coming to us for the road. I do agree that logically, it is a wide enough area to accommodate the traffic, so I would like to move to approve as written. I would state real quick, though, in the draft resolution, there's a typo, it's just, it's just the nine is doubled, there are two number nines, and it looks like it might be a little bit redundant, you guys probably could...
We will get that correct, just a minute.
Other than that, move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Arseneau.
First of all, before I second the motion, I'd also like the housekeeping notation, think if I'm not mistaken, just out of respect, but Mr. Doherty was not the chair, was he the chair when this was, because it says January 7th, and I think we elected a new chair, so is this correct?
No, sir, that is why this one's the draft one. When this was drafted and postponed last month, Mr. Doherty was the chair, but before this gets finalized and signed, it'll be signed by the new, the new chairman of the commission.
Okay, that was just a housekeeping thing, I'm sorry, okay. I moved to, uh, motion to second, yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Narcisse.
So, just to, just to clarify, prior to any constructions, the findings of the study and things will come through your department, and make sure that everything's up to snuff, and make sure we're not putting anybody at risk for anything?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
I have a question for staff, has, have there been any, has any of the parish council made any comments or addressed any concerns regarding this issue?
Yes, sir, the councilman of the other, excuse me, councilman of the area has reached out regarding some of the concerns or the requests into the parish right-of-way, specifically as it relates to the traffic and drainage in there. We have discussed with them, and the Department of Engineers discussed with them, we haven't had any of these items that I've mentioned, number four and number five of the report yet, to, you know, weigh the pros and cons, or, or those alleged concerns, right? So, we fully acknowledge we need both of those documents, and they need to be reviewed and approved, and I believe Mr. Marone just said that to the record, that they intend to provide those documents and adhere to the requirements of the resolution, but he has raised his concerns about it, yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Narcisse.
Another quick question, could we get the, how long does it take to get those studies and things back? Could we postpone until we get those studies back, or would that mess up any kind of processes? I'm just wondering, would it behoove us to keep the people, because there is flooding, there is traffic in that area? Would it be better to get the studies before we approve, or, or cart before the horse type of it?
I would definitely ask legal to just make sure I'm not misspeaking here, but I believe, as the Commission, you have the right to postpone any case that you guys deem is necessary for postponement, for whatever the reasons may be. So, to answer your first question, I think you have that authority, and if the reasoning is to provide those reports, that would be your justification for the postponement. I don't wanna put words in Mr. Marone's mouth, but it sounds like they may have done some of the studies and reports already, if they've gone through the city of Slidell for, and they have comment, and they're approaching a work order, I would imagine the studies are part of that review process, they just not, they have not been presented to us as of this moment, so that would be, I believe, the discretion of the Commission if they can postpone it.
Do you wish to, you could address that?
Yeah. Do you have those studies, like, what's the...
We do have some studies for traffic and drainage that we have submitted to the city of Slidell. I can't say for certain, there, there may need to be some additional information added to those studies to comply with what the parish requires, because they're, the regulations are not exactly the same, similar, but not exact. So, we're not starting from scratch, but there are probably going to be some things that we have to tweak or modify in those studies to be able to comply with, with what Mr. Reynolds' office is looking for. So, we don't expect it to be a long time, but we would like the opportunity to move through this process so that we're not caught in another public hearing delay, because this is one of the issues that is, is part of the process of moving through Slidell, and so we've gotta have this to, to continue through that process, to address some of the issues they have, to finally hopefully get to, to a work order, if all of the approvals are ultimately granted. So, we, we've asked for the ability to move through tonight, knowing that your staff will have to review and approve those studies on both traffic and drainage before we can get the approval, which we need to be able to go to work.
Are our requirements more stringent, or is the city of Slidell more stringent?
On drainage, the, I believe yours are more, gonna be more stringent. On traffic, I don't, I'm not sure.
It's subjective, I get it.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't, I'm not sure on traffic. In other words, I, in traffic, I would say they're very similar, they both, we have to give a level of service, we've gotta give traffic counts and, and so forth, so in that respect, I think they're very similar, but, but the, the drainage requirements from the parish are a little bit more extensive.
How long would it take you to get the updated versions of the stringency to our standards to their department?
I don't, I'd be guessing to answer that question, I, I'm just not, I'm not sure without the engineer being here. Mr. Cooper's here, who is part of the development team, but he's...
We're looking at the traffic study as...
Yeah, the traffic study and the drainage study.
...as well as your concerns?
Yeah, I was just thinking, just in general, if we, if we postpone, this is just me thinking out loud, if we postpone, we can make a more informed decision as opposed to kicking it to...
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to postpone, see if it, if it gets a second.
Okay. Motion to postpone by Commissioner Narcisse, Commissioner Arseneau.
Yeah, so my, my, my statement is gonna be more of a statement, so they need us to proceed, and all they're doing is trying to get the right-of-way. So, I think the city of Slidell is gonna do its due diligence on some of the concerns that we have, so I think we're just delaying them, it's going to actually, I think, unfortunately, I think it's a hardship for them, so I'd still second my motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, Commissioner Robert.
I had a question for legal and staff, actually. Would I be allowed to reach out to the Department of Engineering in Slidell to obtain copies of what has been submitted thus far?
That would...
It sounds like there are drafts on the table.
We have, we have a motion and a second to approve, we have a motion to postpone, if you wish to second the...
I did make the initial motion to approve.
You did, do you wish to modify your motion?
That's why I'm asking the question to staff, I apologize, I'm basing my next comment on, on the answer.
Yeah, I'm trying to get where you're going.
Ms., Mrs. Robert?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sure that, you know, whatever information is on their website, or as part of the initial presentation would be available to you, and the staff could probably, you know, either direct you to their website, or, or, or provide it to you. However, if any other information has been submitted, then it will have to be submitted as a public records request, unless they provide it to us and we can share it with you.
Okay. With that being said, I would like to rescind my motion to approve, and I would like to agree that postponement for one month alone would give us enough time, so.
Okay, Commissioner Arseneau.
And then I changed my motion to approve, not the second thing, my motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to postpone for 30 days. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion to postpone carries, I believe, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, the majority. It's not a majority. You have a majority, six of five.
Just give me one moment to write these down, please.
No, no, quicker.
It's not like a waiver, it's not a waiver, it's just a majority.
Okay, we'll move to item number two on the agenda, minor subdivision, please read it in the record.
Item number two, under minor subdivisions, is case number 2024-4088-MSP. It's a minor subdivision of 6.11 acres into parcels A and B. Owners and representatives is Michael Thompson, surveyors RJ Fusilié and Associates LLC. Parish Council District Representative is Honorable Cheryl Tanner. Property is located on the southwest corner of Louisiana Highway 40 and Tom Penton Road Bush, Ward 5, District 6.
Staff?
The applicant is requesting to create two parcels, being parcel A, which is proposed to be 1.63 acres, and parcel B, which is proposed to be 4.48 acres. The minor subdivision requires a public hearing due to parcel B does not meet the minimum lot width of 150 feet required under the L1 Large Lot Residential District, and requiring a waiver from the Planning Commission. If you take a look at the proposed survey, the owner is requesting to subdivide the existing main residence from the remaining portion of the property, and the approvals should be subject to items one, two, and three.
Sir?
Ladies and gentlemen, Steve LeBlanc, attorney from Baton Rouge, I got this 1513 Stoneley Drive in Baton Rouge. I'm the attorney that did Mr. Thompson's, all his succession over 10 years ago, and his mother's succession, I believe, last year. He just hasn't come here to make sure, I mean, he's admitted his survey, all his forms, all his fees, and he has to be approved, and I'm here to see if you need anything else.
Thank you, sir. Is this for this case?
That's his car.
That's his car, all right. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone against? Bring it back to the Commission. Commissioner Seager.
I'm very familiar with this area, it meets, the only thing that they need to waiver, waiver for is the, the road frontage, and I move to approve.
With the waiver?
With the waivers.
We have a motion to approve with the waiver. Commissioner Doherty?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion to approve with a waiver carries.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Moving to item number three on the agenda.
Item number three is case number 2024-4105-MSP. It's a minor subdivision of 40.68 acres and .64 acres into parcels A and B. Owners and representatives is Dennis Glass, surveyor is Land Surveying LLC. Parish Council District Representative is Honorable Martha J. Kazabon. Property is located on the south side of Arrendale Drive, south of Holly Hill Drive, Folsom, Ward 2, District 3.
Staff?
The applicant is requesting to create two parcels, being parcel A, which is proposed to be 7.59 acres, and parcel B, which is proposed to be 33.73 acres. The minor subdivision requires public hearing due to proposed parcels A and B do not meet the minimum lot width of 300 feet required under the R1 Rural Residential District, and requiring a waiver from the Planning Commission. The requested minor subdivision involves the creation of lots that do not front on a public road or street, but search lots are accessible by private road. As shown on the survey, parcels A and B are proposed to be accessed from a private drive in a 60-foot access road being part of parcel A, and subject to the minor subdivision private drive minimum standards. The owner is requesting a waiver of the requirements of the private drive minimum standards, thus requiring a waiver from the Planning Commission. I'd like to bring your attention to the last survey as part of your packet, which shows a cul-de-sac of Holly Hill Drive, as well as the proposed 60-foot right-of-way. I've, I have pictures at each end here that you can pass around. The first picture that I have is a picture that I took from Google Earth, and it shows the road, basically, at Arrendale Drive and Holly Hill Drive, it shows the road, or what it looks like right now, and also the pictures here are, come from the, the petitioner, Mr. Glass, and you can see that it's the road from the end of the cul-de-sac all the way up to that property, which is 40.68 acres. And the reason for the request for the waiver of, you know, the minor subdivision private road standards is because, as you can see, or if you look at the pictures, you could see that, that it's, the road is already constructed. Also, it's been confirmed by the Director of Public Works that a portion of what is called Holly Hill Drive from Harrendale all the way up to the cul-de-sac will be in the future, taken more than likely into the parish maintenance system, because it was donated to the parish at some point in the past. So, at this time, if it's the wish of the Commission to grant this variance or this waiver, it should also be subject to items one to six that is listed on your, on your staff report.
Okay, Mr. Glass.
Dennis Glass, 84144 North Factory Road. We, I had the 40-some acres, and it was a confusion that the parish wasn't aware of, that back in the 90s, Ms. Planch donated these right-of-ways to some gentleman that was gonna develop a subdivision, which never got developed. So, I got permission, went in and opened up Arrendale, parish came in, they, it's blacktop now. Well, Holly Hill was always went north and south, well, I went in when we needed it, and we fixed them, but they never get, the, south Holly Hill never got put in the parish records, is what it amounts to, and when we all got the research and got it done, it is a parish dedicated right-of-way, not maintained, but dedicated. And then from that point of that cul-de-sac, I got a 60-foot right-of-way going back to this 40 acres, and that's, that was the question was, you know, I'm not building three houses on one right-of-way, because the one house is on Holly Hill, and I just built my granddaughter one last year, which is on my 60-foot private drive, and then we going into the 40 acres, and it's, it's just a maintained road, the parish has looked at it, and, so we just wanna give that to my grandson.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone against? Bring it back to the Commission. Commissioner Seager.
I move to approve with waivers.
Motion to approve with waivers. Commissioner Arseneau.
Yeah, I second the motion to approve the variance subject to items one through six.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Martino.
My only comment was, on my paper, it says Ward 3, District 2. I don't know if that needs to be amended, or just a housekeeping idea.
I saw that, too.
Ward 2, District 3.
It's Ward 2, District 3.
Is how it should read.
Thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Yeah, we are in Ward 2 still.
No other comments.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion, please vote.
Motion to approve with waivers carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And that'll make my grandson happy.
Absolutely. And moving to a re-subdivision, item number four on the, on the agenda.
Item number four is case number 2024-4103-MRP. It's a re-subdivision of Lot 14 into lots 14A and 14B, Wrigley's Estates Phase 1. Owner is Fay L. Wagner, representative is Jones Fusil, LLP, Jeffrey Duchesne, surveyor is JV Burks and Associates Incorporated. Parish Council District Representative is Honorable Jeff Corbin. Parcel is located at the end of Marlin Drive, Slidell, Ward 8, District 13.
The applicant is requesting to create two lots, being lots 14A and 14B. The re-subdivision requires a public hearing due to, as stated in the restrictive covenants of the approved plat, no lot shall be further re-subdivided without approval from the Planning Commission, and lots 14A and 14B do not meet the minimum lot width of 100 feet road frontage required under the Wrigley's Estates PUD require, but Plan Unit Development District, and the 60-foot minimum road frontage on a cul-de-sac, thus requiring a waiver from the Planning Commission. minimum road frontage on a cul-de-sac, thus requiring a waiver from the planning commission. And the request shall be subject to item one, two, and three.
Mr. Shane.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Honorable Commissioner Jeff Shane of the Jones Fusell Law Firm at PO Box 1810 in Covington. I represent the owner and petitioner, Ms. Fay Wagner, who is the owner of Lot 14 and obviously seeks to re-subdivide into Lot 14A and 14B. As you can see from the survey, the history of the property, it's a two-and-a-half acre lot, and she constructed a boathouse in the water, on the bay or backside, if you will, of her property. You can see that the waters, the property is actually surrounded on three sides by water, and planned to eventually build her home on the larger section of the property that would, of course, have a view of the lake. She's decided not to build her home, but she loves her boathouse and all of the things that she's able to do there. So she went to the developer, and also, he then went to the HOA to make sure they did not have a problem with the proposed re-subdivision, which results in Lot 14A being a .649-acre parcel. That will, of course, include the boathouse and also boat launch. Obviously, there's not enough land to build another home there, so there's not a concern of there being another structure. And of course, it will allow her to market Lot 14B, which is a 1.85-acre parcel. We believe there's more than adequate frontage on the cul-de-sac to have access to each lot. Again, we went to the developer and HOA to make sure they were comfortable with that. So with those thoughts, we respectfully request that you approve the re-subdivision, but subject to the waivers noted by staff as it relates to the frontage on Marlin Drive. If any of you have any questions, I'll be glad to address them.
Thank you, Mr. Shane. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Don't go anywhere, Mr. Shane. Anyone against?
It's kind of nice.
Absolutely. So I have a question for you, and I have a question for staff before we get started with the commissioners. What year was the boathouse built?
Ooh, I don't know, but I'm going to tell you, 10 years? Eight or 10 years?
So I have a, I have a question for staff. Is there a parish ordinance against building a recreational structure on a lot that does not have a residence attached to it?
In this instance, no, because it is a single-family residence. It was built as a single-family residence.
Has an apartment in the, in the boathouse?
Yes, sir. Yes.
So it was really the primary residence or the residence on the parcel when she built it?
So if it was, if there was enough space to be a buildable lot, this would have to be designated like a guesthouse or something to be able to build it?
That's correct, yes.
Gotcha. Okay, I'll bring it back to the Commission. Commissioner Roberts.
I would like to speak, however, I wanted to ask, this is an area that I do not personally live in, and I know that there are other commissioners, so if they would like to go before me, I would like to hear their thoughts as well.
Okay. Just the, the reason why I asked the date is because I was wondering if I built it. Commissioner Arsonaut.
Well, my, my comments, Mr. Robert, would be that I move to approve with subject to items one to three.
Okay, Commissioner Dougherty.
I'll second that with the waivers.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Robert.
I was going to, motion a second, I'm good. Yeah, this is.
Exactly what's in line with the area, with the subdivision. I mean, and there's no room to add another. It's okay, I'm live, and it's just, yeah. There's no room to add another structure behind that boathouse anyway, that break wall is right there, so I'm good with it.
There would, the only concern that I had, and I, I mirror your comments, the only concern I had was, is that without, with, if the property wasn't divided the way that it was, there would be another buildable space, you know? And I did not, I was not aware that there was a residence already in the boathouse. You know, being, I know that, having been in the industry after Katrina, a lot of recreational structures were built on lots without residences, and I know that there were some ordinances passed on that to kind of curtail that endeavor. Obviously, this might have been done or grandfathered in. So we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion to approve with waivers carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did.
All right, so we're going to move to item number six on the agenda.
Excuse me. Item number six is under Old Business. It's the LaCheneer Subdivision Phase 2, which is permit number 2021-2569-PEP. The owner developer is BLD Investments LLC. Parish council district representative is Honorable David Kugel. Property is located north of Cross Creek Drive, east of South Military Road in Slidell, Ward 8, District 9. The owner is requesting to change the previously approved subdivision name LaCheneer Subdivision Phase 2 to Turtle Creek at LaCheneer.
Staff?
Yes, sir. Honorable Commissioners, developer for the above-captioned project, BLD Investment LLC, has requested that the name of the above-referenced development be changed from LaCheneer Subdivision Phase 2 to Turtle Creek at LaCheneer. This office has reviewed this request and has no objection. Therefore, it is recommended that the planning commission approve the name change for this development as stated above. Thank you.
Mr. Shane.
Thank you. Jeff Shane of the Jones Fusell Law Firm, PO Box 1810 in Covington, representing the developer of Turtle Creek at LaCheneer. The story is pretty simple. My client bought the undeveloped Phase 2 of LaCheneer, which was a different development in terms of style, lot size, et cetera, and developed it in a manner that is very consistent with Turtle Creek, and intends to market it as a part of Turtle Creek, although it'll have connectivity to both LaCheneer and Turtle Creek. I learned something new. You learn something new every day. I did not realize that we would need to amend the PUD in order to change the name, and we did that through a minor amendment by a letter of Ms. Cook earlier in the week. And I also learned that we had to come back to you to change the name to get it on the final plat, because the final subdivision approval will now be administrative. So we would like to style the plat to be Turtle Creek at LaCheneer, because we would like to market it as Turtle Creek Lots, because that's really what they are. So with all that having been said, we respectfully request that you approve this change.
Thank you, Mr. Shane. Anyone in the audience wish to speak, speak in favor? Anyone against? Bring it back to the Commission. Commissioner Arsonaut.
Yeah, I move that we accept the motion to change the name to Turtle Creek at LaCheneer.
Okay, motion to approve by Commissioner Arsonaut. Commissioner Narcisse.
I think we need to talk about it for another 30 minutes. Second, second.
We have a motion and a second. How many turtles are there, and is there a creek? No, okay. Please vote.
Motion to approve carries.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn. We'll have a second. Second.
Adjourn.